Okay.
Hey again.
Hey again.
We made it here.
I'm so glad to see you.
Okay.
I know you are for real.
Anyway.
Hey, how are you?
How you doing?
Good, are you?
Good.
This is not this is a company. Very much so. Very much so.
I don't have time to do that. Christian Mash. Christian Savannah.
Yeah, I'm the show. Let's go across the board.
It's so late, Tolan.
I didn't see that your car was there or gone.
Yeah. My car is gone. It's a fascinating story.
Oh, I'd love to hear it.
Just to.
So I went to City Hall and said to Lauren, I have a flat tire. And she said, well, I could change it for you, but she was in the dress.
I bet she could.
So she said, let's go get one of the guys. And I was like, really? Your pen's on the floor if that's yours. So we went upstairs to Dave's office and she was like, well, sometimes Dave's wearing white pants. So if he's wearing white pants, we won't ask him. So we knocked on Dave's office door and I said, hey, Dave, what are you wearing?
Oh, my God. Now inappropriate, bro.
And then I was like, has anybody seen Lori Waters?
Yeah. Report directly to HR.
Anyway, I was like, she said, do you want to change a tire? And he was like, oh, help. So he was gonna go to his car and get his air compressor thing. He has a new one.
Oh, just to kind of blow it up.
Steve Green heard us and he was like, oh, help. So Steve Green comes out the different door ahead, like three minutes ahead of Dave with this giant.
Oh, no.
And here comes Dave a minute later and he has a little air compressor in his hand like this big. And Steve has one.
He's got one the size of a cow.
Anyway, it ended up needing both air compressors because Steve's running on air. There was a lot of jokes about size.
Oh, my God.
And then.
So then, then Lori showed up.
Right. And then Dave told me I could drive to the tire shop, but we could hear the air coming out of the tire.
Oh, no, so it was coming out pretty fast.
Steve would have been sitting on it. And I'm sure that's what Brian wanted to do, but Steve said. I did. So I said, I'm gonna drive to the tire shop. Dave says I can and Steve followed me.
How sweet. Sweet man.
That's you again.
Yeah.
Did you run Bobby off?
Yeah, I told him to go to the beach for a week.
Oh, that's right. He's going to their place.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. If you would please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance, remain standing for the invocation.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under one, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Wilson?
Please pray with me. Gracious God, we're grateful for this beautiful world and we ask that you guide our efforts at preservation. However, tonight we are troubled by the hurt in the eyes of our neighbors treated unkindly. We grieve for countries at war and the innocent victims. We humbly ask that you bestow wisdom and guidance on us as we work to solve issues here in Canton, Georgia. For all of our many, many blessings, we're grateful and we pray in the name of Jesus. Amen.
So to call our July 7th council meeting to order. Begin with a consideration to approve the agenda. Are there any changes, revisions, additions? Motion?
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion. We have some guests and visitors here tonight with us and we'll begin with Chief Mayor Phil. He has some employee recognition for us. Always a pleasure.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good evening.
Good evening.
So tonight, we want to recognize Ms. Tanya Benia for her 15 years of service with the City of Canton Police Department. I know we all know that behind every great organization is a great administrative assistant. And she certainly fits that bill for us. She's got, her family is here tonight, so we're happy to have them. And then all her detectives, that motley crew that she has to keep. They've come to recognize her also. And I was just kidding her yesterday. I walked into her office and usually there's five or six people in her office getting directions on whatever they need to be doing. So I don't, on days that she's off, we're just pretty much lost over there. I do want to thank her for the dedication, 15 years of being with the city. She's a very loyal, dedicated employee and has meant a great deal to us and to the citizens of Canton. So thank you so much, Tanya, for your 15 years. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you. Congratulations, Ms. Benita. Thank you for your work. I know your family's proud of you. We're proud of you. And I know your coworkers appreciate you. Next, we have a special treat tonight. We have my friend Bobby and Steve here with the Canton Beekeepers Club to make a presentation. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. No, you go ahead. I'm gonna switch the order up here. Made an executive decision, so. Me.
Yes, sir.
I got the bully pulpit, so. Zek decision. Go ahead. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. This is Bobby Temponon. I'm Steve Posey. And we're with the Etowah Beekeepers Club. We're a friendly, inclusive group of beekeepers out of Canton, which serves the community in the Etowah River Region in North Georgia. Our goal is to increase the viability of honeybees through support of local beekeepers and education of the public. We provide education, best practices, startup mentoring to our members, as well as promote awareness of the honeybee. Currently, our club, this is our first year, has over 130 members.
Great.
Yeah, so. Hi, y'all. A couple of years before the formation of the Etowah River Beekeepers, while selling honey at the Canton Farmer's Market, I had put a bug, pardon the pun, and then candidate for Mayor Bill Grant's ear about the potential for placing beehives on city property as part of a green initiative and perhaps having Canton become a Bee City USA member should he become mayor. I think the true catalyst might have been maybe mentioning that Rome, Georgia, held that designation. And if they could do it, maybe y'all could. So fast forward a couple of years and here we are. Y'all are already aware of the Environmental and Sustainability Advisory Board's initiative to be designated as a Bee City USA, where I just lost my place. But one small part of that effort, though, was to designate a space on city property for the Etowah River Beekeepers to place beehives and use as a teaching apiary for new beekeepers. We're grateful for the efforts and help that Kelly Pendley has provided for us and your help, Billy. And so ultimately, the city has designated space at the Public Works Facility on Ridge Road for us to have a teaching apiary. Currently, there are four beehives located at that facility. And I'm happy to say that those hives have provided multiple opportunities for new beekeepers to get direct, hands-on training from experienced beekeepers that they otherwise would not have had. Beekeeping is a difficult and unforgiving endeavor and it hurts sometimes. The learning curve to achieving success, though, is steep and it's an iterative process. The teaching apiary has accelerated that process for many, many people who otherwise would be faced with a very real prospect of failure due to a simple act of experience.
Initially, the members of the club donated equipment to start the teaching apiary, but we're pleased to report, we applied and received a grant from the GBA Association and were able to purchase brand-new equipment for both apiary down here and we have another one up in North Canton. And this, that was provided by the Honey Bee License Plate Program that they gather the funds from. So right now, Mayor, if you could come down, we'd like to present.
You've got that.
Beehive.
No tricks up the sleeve.
We're gonna start bee sting therapy tonight.
Apatherapy.
I'd like to present this. This is a sign one of our members made to go down to South Apiary.
And that's not all. So one of the other things that I'd like to talk about is there's another item we'd like to present to you and the council. It's something that's a little, it's little known, but it's a traditional arrangement in beekeeping when a beekeeper sets his hives on someone else's property. It's called a yard rent jug. A landowner with crops or a garden will often welcome bees because it helps, you know? And they do that without any expectations of being paid. But beekeepers do get paid for short-term placements of hives for pollination services, for example, but rarely for long-term placements. Regardless of expectations, yard rent is often paid or gifts are made in lieu of rent with large containers of honey. This is a real thing. In fact, if you Google yard rent jug, you'll find there's a specific class of large containers that exists for this very purpose. So with gratitude, the club would like to present. Bee jars.
Oh, wow.
To the city. To use as it will, bearing in mind that this honey came from a place that used to be a dump. That's very poetic. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you. Appreciate it, y'all.
Great. Mayor, you gotta cook the biscuits?
Yeah, I thought there may be honey in that box, so that's why I put them ahead, so. Thank you, guys. And Bobby and Steve, I think this is a perfect example of where great ideas come up from citizens and not always from city hall downs. So thank you for helping us fulfill our mission of sustaining our natural environment and education to our community. So you're very much appreciated, so appreciate it. So now, with that excitement over, we will go back to Canton Transportation Master Plan Presentation, Modern Mobility Partners Project Manager Kirsten Moat and Bethany.
Yeah, I just wanted to quickly introduce Kirsten. We've been working with Modern Mobility Partners for the last six months or so on developing this plan and it's well underway. And Kirsten's gonna give us an update on where we're at.
Great. Thank you. Welcome, Kirsten.
Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me tonight. As Bethany mentioned, my name is Kirsten Moat. I'm with Modern Mobility Partners. We're a transportation consulting firm here in Atlanta. And we are about halfway through the plan, so we appreciate you giving us the opportunity to provide you with a brief update tonight on how the plan is going. So tonight, we're gonna start off with just some quick introductions and then we'll move into project schedule, the whole purpose of the project, the vision and goals, which is really where I want to focus our time this evening, what we've accomplished over the last six months and what we plan to accomplish over the next five to six months. So with that, let's jump right in. The plan is sponsored by the City of Canton and we're working with Mr. Peppers, Mr. Ingram, Bethany and Ken very closely on this project. I'm with Modern Mobility Partners, so as I mentioned, we do transportation planning. And then we are supported by Practical Design Partners, who's a roadway design firm. And they are helping us with cost estimations and some conceptual designs as we get closer to the end of the project. Just to put some faces with some names, a few of these people were here just a little while ago for our first public meeting this afternoon. So myself as the project manager and I'm supported by three senior planners and traffic engineers. And then Brad and Angela are co-founders of Practical Design Partners. So this is a graphical representation of the project's schedule. And the red line down the middle is where we are today, which is the beginning of July. And here we are doing the council briefing tonight, the first of two that we're going to do. And we also hosted the first public meeting here in this room earlier this afternoon. And we had a pretty good turnout. And you can see all the progress that we've made since we kicked this off in December of 2021. But you can see there's still plenty left to do for the rest of the summer, the fall and into the end of the year. So what I really want to focus on this evening is the purpose of this plan, the vision of this plan and the goals of this plan. So the purpose of the study is really about what do we want to achieve? And working with city staff, we kind of came up with four main purposes of the study. First, we want to create a comprehensive transportation plan that helps the decision-making of you all and your staff on where to, where to fund transportation projects, what to fund, what should take priority. We wanted to make sure that we were including a demographical analysis, understanding the trends and the growth of the City of Canton and where that growth is gonna continue to happen and how can transportation support that growth and be more proactive in addressing that growth. We wanted to identify not only projects, but policies and programs that can support the City of Canton. We wanted to include fairly detailed costs. We want to include some concept design, really try to push this plan more into implementation than just a plan that says, here's what you should do, good luck. So we wanted to really put together some step-by-steps for some of those really important, high-ranking plans. And finally, we wanted to do this as, under the umbrella of community engagement. So we really wanted to make sure that this process was inclusive. And we're trying to do a lot of different type of outreach. Some of that has been online with a virtual open house format that was advertised to the public. It also includes a mapping exercise where people can drop pins of their concerns. We've had some in-person events and we're gonna be continuing to do that throughout the rest of the project. So once we determined what the purpose of the project was, what's the vision? And here, we not only worked with city staff, but we worked with our advisory committee, which is made up of stakeholders, residents, more city staff, county staff, the school district, emergency services. Councilwoman Wilson serves on that committee with us. And so we presented a vision and we refined it based on the input that we received. And this is the final vision that we got today. We want to provide the residents and visitors of the City of Canton a plan that outlines safe access and enhanced connectivity to neighborhoods, recreational facilities, local businesses and natural resources. Today, while envisioning future transportation solutions that ensure sustainability and implementable action steps. So that is quite the vision statement. But all in all, what we're trying to do with this plan is connect the communities, connect your neighborhoods to your amenities, make it sustainable, make it, make Canton be able to sustain the growth that's going to happen and make it the best place to live. So now we talk about goals and we use these goals to evaluate and prioritize projects. How well do these projects align with the goals of the plan? The goals of the plan were taken straight from the Canton tenants. So we use that as a guide to develop each of the goals. And within each of the goals, we're gonna have some evaluation criteria. So those projects are gonna go through the evaluation, they're gonna be measured against each of those goals. And the ones that align with more of the goals are the ones that are gonna be the higher priority projects. So those are the, those are the six categories of goals. There are several goals under each one of those categories. And we have all of that information in presentations. So kind of wrapping up this briefing tonight, what we've accomplished so far is we held our first steering committee meeting back in March. That's where we really finalized those vision and goals. We've been working diligently on existing conditions, understanding trends within Canton, both demographic and transportation. We have launched our virtual open house, which is hosted by Frame. And we have a Wiki map, which is the comment platform where you can drop your pins. We had our second steering committee meeting in May where we asked for input on our existing conditions and our needs. We're still working through our needs assessment task and that's really where we develop our initial list of project recommendations. We've got our first public meeting today and here we are tonight with our first council briefing. So what's coming up? The next thing that's gonna be coming up is drafting a list of projects. So that's gonna be taking place the rest of this month and into August. We want to evaluate and prioritize those recommended projects, kind of see where they fall in line. And again, that's based on the goals. We will present that information to our steering committee meeting number three, which will be sometime in August. We will then host a public meeting number two in September to get feedback on the projects, how they score, how they rank. Do you like it? Do you not? What needs to be changed? Really get good input. We'll be briefing city council again in October, let you know what came out of this whole process. And then, once we have our final list of recommendations, we're gonna be putting those implementation plans together. So implementation plans is not only what you have to do to get the project done, but how might you be able to fund those projects as well? And then we're gonna get into documentation and we plan to have a draft report in November and hopefully council adoption in December. So that is what I have tonight. I will be happy to take any questions that you have. And again, thank you for the opportunity to present.
Great. Thank you. Any questions from Ms. Moat? Ms. Wilson?
Kirsten, I'm just curious as to the feedback you're getting through the website, through the internet. Is that working well? Are you getting some input from our citizens? I'm not, I'm not real good on the computer and I just wonder if other citizens are having input to you with that.
Yes, so thank you for that question. We have gotten outstanding response on the website. I have been very impressed with the number of responses and the comments that we've gotten because you're right, in some communities, it's tough to get that virtual interaction and a lot of people don't feel comfortable using the computer. I would say that we've received somewhere between 75 and 100 comments on that platform. And that is when we pulled the data from it back at the end of May. We're keeping that platform and the comment period open through the end of July. So I anticipate that we're gonna have even more. But we had a similar exercise today during the public meeting where we actually did the physical, like dots on the map and write the comment down. And so we were able to get more comments that way. So we'll be combining all of those together.
And I appreciate your response to us because I know that you are reacting to the questions you get and I appreciate that.
Any other questions? Thank you. Appreciate your report and it's a very important work that you're doing and we really appreciate it. So look forward to hearing your next update. And so it is important and it's more important than honey, but I appreciate, appreciate your understanding for the mix up there on the schedule, so.
No problem. Thank you very much. Happy to be here.
Thank you. We have a couple of public hearings on the agenda tonight, beginning with public hearing discussion for cases MPA 2205-001 and CUP 2205-002, master plan amendment and conditional use permit for Pod J of Riverstone for the construction of 172-unit townhome development. Mr. Green, I believe you have an update for us on this?
Yes, I do. Mayor, members of council, this was a public hearing tonight, as you said, for a master plan amendment to Pod J to add residential as a permitted use in that particular pod and the CUP, as you stated, for the townhomes. Unfortunately, the method the applicant used to notify the property owners within 1,000 feet and the abutting property owners was not as prescribed in our requirements. They simply sent the notification letters out by regular mail. We require they go out by certificate of mailing to make sure that we can tell that all the property owners were notified. The signs have been placed on the property as required. The legal ad has been run in the, or the block ad has been run in the paper. So this item needs to be deferred until the first meeting in August in order for them to meet the notification requirements as we are required, or as we require them to do.
Okay. So we'll push that to the first weekend of August for the public hearing?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Thank you. And next, public hearing for the 2022 millage rate. City Manager, Mr. Peppers, and our Finance Director, Melissa Forster, is gonna give us an overview before our public hearing begins.
Ms. Forster's got a presentation for you and I'll have a few comments after she finishes.
Welcome.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
This is the second of three presentations that we're gonna have on the millage rate as required by Georgia code. So I'll begin with just a brief summary of the digest. And as you can see, it's increasing rather dramatically. Most of the increase is affiliated with inflation, which we'll talk about a little bit later. Some of that is affiliated with growth. And you'll notice there's a gap between the blue line and the gray line. And the top, the blue line, if you can't see, is the gross digest, the gray is the net digest. And that gap is largely affiliated with the senior tax exemption. City of Canton's millage rate over time, you can see we've held steady and we are recommending to maintain the 5.4 millage rate for the city. Millage rate advertisement, this is what causes a lot of confusion and some grief for residents when they see us put this ad as required by law in the newspaper. And so I've highlighted a few items in blue that can be referenced in the chart on the right. And a few items to highlight is the first blue line that says the increase in property taxes by 20.43%. As I just mentioned, we plan on holding the millage rate steady at 5.4, but because we are not implementing the rollback rate as required by law, we are required to report that as an increase. And as I mentioned before, just some demonstrations of inflation and growth on the chart on the right, you'll see the total real parcels over the last five years have slowly increased. What's more dramatic is the average fair market value of residential property in the city. And you'll see that for 2022, that is $375,000, whereas five years ago, that average home value was $200,000. On this chart on the right will also show that our millage rate has stayed steady while the rollback rate fluctuates up and down. And you'll see the last line on the chart on the right, percentage tax increase, that also fluctuates based on inflation and the rollback millage rate. So what does this mean for the average resident in the City of Canton? For the average home of a resident that owns and occupies a property, the fair market value of $375,000 will be an assessed value of $150,000. The millage rate of 5.4, which is the same that we've had for the last five years, would amount to an annual property tax levy of $810. For homeowners with a senior or disability exemption, using the same value of a home, $375,000, it assesses at $150,000, but they get to take advantage of the senior or disability exemption, which the full exemption is $112,000. That leaves just a net assessed value of $38,000. The same millage rate, 5.4, and the seniors would pay just $205.20 on the same $375,000 home. A few important notes related to the millage rate that we are maintaining. Out of all of our total real parcels, there are over 10,000 residential parcels within the city. Of those, 209. Of those, two hundred and nine, two thousand nine hundred and ninety parcels qualify for the senior exemption. That's nearly a third. While the senior exemption saves seniors more than one point seven million in taxes, that also costs the city one point seven million in revenues. That being the case, it's important to highlight that with the senior exemption, we can still operate and maintain services by holding our millage rate steady at five point four. More than seventy-eight percent of senior-owned properties receive the full one hundred and twelve thousand dollar senior exemption. And it's impressive to note that just two years ago, only fifty-one percent of seniors received the full one hundred and twelve thousand dollar exemption. Two years ago, we also had four hundred and eight fewer senior households. As we consider maintaining the five point four millage rate and what the rollback rate is, which I showed you earlier, we have to keep in mind that we must pay the county fire tax rate, whatever the city's millage rate is. So, if we maintain the five point four millage rate and pay what the county's proposed at the fire tax rate for two point nine eight four, city is left with just two point four one six mils to operate. If we were to implement the rollback rate, which was mentioned earlier, at four point four eight four mils, and pay the fire tax to the county, we're left with just one point five mils. And that is why the city's recommendation is to maintain five point four. I'm glad to answer any questions on this presentation, and here's just a brief schedule of where we are now and what will be coming up in the next few weeks.
Thank Ms. Forster. Mr. Peppers?
A couple of comments. I've received these occasionally when the assessment information goes out. There's sometimes a misconception with residents that only people who own a property pay taxes, that renters don't pay taxes, which is not the case. All properties are, are taxed. And I actually went back and pulled the one, two, three. The nine largest apartment complexes in the city, just as an example, because sometimes we get questions about apartments. Crest at Laurel Canyon, as an example, is valued at forty-three million dollars, so their tax bill to the city is two hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars, which proportionally, based on the number of units, is about what we receive for single-family homes on average. Couple of other things. The state's requirement of advertising millage rate is based upon the fact that they assume that government can operate on the same amount of revenues that it received in prior years, and that's why they call it a revenue-neutral rollback rate. I would challenge anybody to go and look at your own personal finances or budgets over the last six, eight, nine months, and see anything that's the same cost as it was a year ago. Cost of services have gone up, fuel costs have gone up, so when our officers are out patrolling, or we've got public works that are out working on sites and they're moving equipment, the cost of that gasoline has gone up. The cost of labor has gone up, so whether it's work that we do or work that we contract out, those costs have gone up. As it relates to things like utilities, our utility costs have gone up, just as much as your utility cost at home. One thing that I always try to stress to residents is that the only part of the property tax process that the city controls is the levying of the tax via the millage rate. And since 2017, the city has held steady a millage rate of five point four. That's the one thing that we can control, is that particular millage rate. We don't control the assessment process, and we don't control the appeals process either. I would specifically note that, and, and, and it was kind of alluded to in one of the slides, since we pay for fire services out of our existing millage rate, when we have a senior that takes advantage of the senior tax exemption, or takes, or we have someone who's taking advantage of the disability exemption, for instance, we still owe, based on the fair market value of that property, regardless of their exemption. So, in essence, we have some property owners who are taking advantage of those exemptions because they're eligible for those. We have to subsidize for fire service for that particular property. So as those exemptions continue to grow, we have to come up with funds somewhere else to offset the cost for those services. We feel like being able to provide the best senior tax exemption in Cherokee County and also hold our millage rate steady is something that the majority of our residents benefit from. We have the lowest tax rate of any city in Cherokee County, and we have one of the lowest tax rates of any cities in, in the state of Georgia. So, I just wanted to make a few of those notes.
Thank you, Mr. Peppers. So at this point, we will open our public hearing, and we have one citizen signed up to speak, Mr. Thomas Weaver. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I just wanted to take a moment to first thank Ms. Forster and also the remarks, and I will be careful not to, not to repeat what has been shared thus far. I wanted to take a moment first to thank the city council for having strong fiscal conservatism and holding its millage rate at five point four mils after the presentation, and also learning that it is inclusive of the fire district that's levied by Cherokee for the provision of fire services based on the consolidation of years ago. Sharing that, I wanted to take this moment to reiterate to council what I had shared with council both last year and the year before that, is that as people continue to age into that senior exemption, that was one of the major tenets of what brought people here, one of the big things that was sold to people to move to Canton all those years ago is that senior tax exemption. I would just ask council to be mindful that as people and owners continue to age into that, that tax base inevitably is going to continue to shrink based on that exemption. So I would just ask that council continue to find ways to stand firm in its fiscal conservatism and hold that line while at the same time trying to continue to provide the level of services that we've all grown accustomed to receiving here. Having shared that, though, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for allowing me to speak, and thank you also to each member of council.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. We will close the public hearing now and open it up to council for discussion. Again, I don't want to repeat what, what's been said, but I did want to reiterate that the, holding the five point four mils that we've held the past six years, again, is the lowest in Cherokee County, but, but also stated it's the lowest in the city's history as far as we can go back. So, to be able to have one-third of our citizens be receiving the, the senior exemption and still receive all the services that we, we offer to all of our citizens with the, the trails, the parks, and the, you know, building a state-of-the-art water treatment plant, and parking decks, and housing investments we're making, and art, and economic development, and the list goes on and on. And to be able to do all those things, and just by holding the, the millage rate steady at the lowest in the county, and when you take the fire district out, that we're operating the city and doing all those things on basically two point four mils, this is something I think, I'm very proud of, I'm very proud of this council, I'm very proud of our team at the work that they're doing. And I think as Mr. Weaver alluded to, we always have to question, you know, is that sustainable with the, with the senior exemption? However, that senior exemption is, is not something in council's control, it was voted on by the citizens, and if it was ever changed, it would have to be voted on by the citizens, so. But still, we're, we're able to offer that to one-third of our citizens, and, and I think it's a huge benefit to them. But again, all of our citizens enjoy, enjoy all the things that we are able to do with our budgets and, and at this, at this millage rate. And I'm just proud of the work that, that we're doing. And also, I think it's also important to, to comment that in addition to that, we, the city has no general obligation debt, and no, no debt obligation for our citizens, so I think that's a pretty, pretty good combination that we can all be proud of, so. Those are my comments. Questions, comments? Okay, we'll move on. Thank you. So we will move into our business meeting. You have in your packet the council draft meetings from June sixteenth meeting. Are there any changes, revisions, or motions?
I move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion. We had no one sign up for a ten-minute public input, so we'll move into our old business agenda. Item A, discussion and possible action on amended condition for MP 2110-002 for Dr. John T. Pettit, Cherokee and Longview Streets. Mr. Green?
Mayor, members of council, this is a somewhat oversight on my part during the action meeting that was held on June sixteenth. When I read through the staff report, and I mentioned that the project was for a hundred and twenty-four single-family homes. When I got to reading the suggested conditions, I stated a hundred and twenty-four single-family detached residences. Mr. Tolan made the motion to approve the request, subject to the conditions I had read them, and the application was approved. In the office the next day, Mr. Patton pointed out that the conditions were for detached. The PDR zoning district for which this was approved for requires a variety of housing. So this is simply some housekeeping measures to amend that first condition to state that the development shall be limited to a hundred and twenty-four single-family residences. If you like, you can put in there attached and detached, which are duplexes. Mr. Beecham's plan all along has shown a duplexes to be part of his development.
Okay. Thank you. Questions, comments, motions? So everyone's understanding some mix up there, pretty clearly?
Yeah, I'm going to have to move for it. He, what we're looking at is changing condition one to include attached and detached housing.
Yes, sir.
I'd move that we amend condition one for MP 2110-002 to include attached and detached housing. Does that work for you?
Yes, sir.
Fantastic.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? All members voted for the motion.
One, one comment I would, I would make on that, Mr. Mayor, just, just for the public, because you've made it attached and detached, does not mean it will become a townhome product, which would require a conditional use permit for more than three units. So it's clearly just duplexes and single-family detached product.
Based on the master plan that was presented?
That's correct, yes.
And since we're on the, the topic of house cleaning and oversights, I skipped over our May financial reports, I'm going to go back one more time to review of May 2022 financials. Ms. Forster? It's been a long week, peoples, I'm sorry, and a long day.
Well, the good news is there were no significant fluctuations in our financials in the recent, so I was just going to highlight a few of items that we dealt with because it was a heavy reporting period for the city. So first of all, I'll start off covering the fire services tax for 2021. We paid that, and that was in the amount of five million, two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. The municipal securities rulemaking board also published the city's fiscal year 2021 operating data on its Emma system, which is in compliance with SEC Rule 15C2-12, and that report is due annually by June 27th. The Georgia Department of Community Affairs accepted the city's 2022 GOMI survey, which is due annually by June 30th, and the Georgia Department of Transportation accepted the city's fiscal year 2021 local road and street finance questionnaire, which is due annually by June 30th. If anyone has any questions, I'll be glad to answer those.
Could you repeat the, the total amount we paid for fire services?
Five million, two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Thank you.
And that was based on property taxes paid in 2021.
So I think a lot of our citizens don't always know that, even though we consolidated fire services with the county, we still pay those services, our, our taxpayers will pay those services, and so what, we did get out of consolidation, though, we're not paying for the new fire stations and the fire trucks, and, and all the stations are being built, but we are still paying for fire services, and our taxpayers are paying for fire services, and that's a pretty big chunk of money, so, thank you. Any questions for Ms. Forster? Okay. We'll move forward once again. Old business item B, discussion and possible action to abandon a portion of Jackie Moore Lane.
This was brought forward from another meeting. Ultimately, what is happening here is there's a portion of the roadway that currently sits adjacent to property that's being redesigned for a project on Jackie Moore Lane. They have to utilize two entrances into their project, so this portion of roadway is not needed anymore. So this item is to abandon that portion and basically allow for the roadway to be removed. The item that's below this on the agenda lets it be known that we're not disposing of that property because we do have water and sewer infrastructure that's within right-of-way. We will continue to own that right-of-way, but in the next item, we will provide access to the developer to do work within that right-of-way as it projects. So the roadway disappears, but we will continue to have a permanent easement there, a permanent property ownership there for water and sewer.
Okay. Any questions?
And Mr. Rustbridge can answer any questions that you have on that matter.
Any questions for Mr. Rustbridge, or discussion, or motions?
I move to abandon Jackie Moore Lane and to instruct the city attorney to bring back a recommendation for the disposition of the right-of-way.
Which we won't be dispositioning anymore, so I apologize for that. Just to abandon it.
Just to abandon it, okay.
So a motion to abandon Jackie Moore Lane, is there a second?
Second.
So a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion. And then following this, Mr. Peppers mentioned, discussion, possible action on access and grading easement for Jackie Moore Lane. Discussions, questions, or motions?
Yeah, you will need to make a motion for the access agreement that allows them to do work in that area.
So, move to allow the easement for Jackie Moore Lane?
Access and grading.
Or access and grading.
Second, then.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion. Item D, discussion and possible action on the city's contract with Waste Pro for sanitation services. Mr. Ingram?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council, good evening. If you recall back in June, Mayor and council approved for the city to engage Waste Pro for sanitation services starting in October one. I mentioned to you that we didn't have a contract and agreement prepared at that time, and we still wanted to offer our legal counsel the opportunity to review that. So you have in front of you to, tonight, a copy of that agreement. It has been changed with Mr. Dyer's recommendations on that, so we are bringing that to you tonight in hopes that you would approve that for the mayor to execute with those changes. Happy to answer any questions that you have, or further explanation if needed.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ingram. Again, we've talked about this, and our community did a great job, and just basically tonight, considering approving the contract, so. Questions, comments, motions? I'll look to Mr. Garland for that.
If nobody has any comments, I'd make a motion to, for the city to approve the contract with Waste Pro for sanitation services, along with the, with the recommendations from Mr. Dyer to that contract.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. All members voted for the motion.
Do appreciate everybody's hard work on that.
Yes.
Long process.
Mayor, I'd, I'd just like to make a, a comment. I'm, we're, this will begin on October 1st, and I'm assuming that our customers will just see a seamless transition and not even know that somebody knew's coming in. Is that right?
We hope so. We, there, there will be a little, you know, we have to exchange carts.
Right.
Provide new carts, so we're going to work with our current vendor, and Waste Pro, we were already talking about that event, so we're going to try to get that communication channels open and get that out to the customers as quickly as possible, so that we can hopefully make that, as like you said, seamless as possible.
Definitely. Good point, so, yes, thank everyone for the hard work there, so. Item E, discussion and possible action regarding an agreement to engage Schneider Electric for on-call energy sustainability services. Mr. Ingram?
Yes, thank you. Once again, council and the city has elected to engage Schneider to be our partner in sustainability efforts. As council and everyone's aware, it has been hot the past month or two, inordinately hot. And a few weeks ago, we had a situation where we had some issues with our HVAC units. Now, it's nothing new. We have it in this year's budget to replace the HVAC units here, but that kind of brought the issue to the forefront. And Schneider was able to step in and, and one, we said, we need to get that project going, and Schneider is going to be a valuable consultant on that project. They're going to help us with issuing the RFP, putting it out to bid. Please understand that every, all decisions are going to be brought back to council for y'all's decisions. But we kind of fast-paced this and said, you know, we need to enter into an agreement so we can get that ball rolling. Now, as it turns out, even if we started that project today, it's still going to take quite a bit of time. And furthermore, we can't shut the HVAC down tomorrow anyway. So we're wanting to get this ball rolling, get Schneider on board, get them to start designing the HVAC and get this project. So you have in front of you an agreement. Now, this is going to cover the HVAC project, but it's also going to cover other projects. I know that they're working with the Sustainability Committee, Ms. Pennley, you know, doing a lot of other work, so that's going to help with those projects as well, but you have in front of you an agreement, and I think considering this, we're wanting to ask if y'all would consider action tonight. Now, let me give one more, make one more note. Schneider came in on their own accord, I mean, we, we asked them, you know, if they'd, if they would be willing to do this. They came in and looked, gave a cursory, real quick review of our system. They have noticed a couple of low-hanging fruit, if you will. They think they can replace three fans, and it will help our HVAC system through the summer so that we can get to the fall or the winter to replace those units. And I think they're willing to do that. If we can sign an agreement and get the whole project going, I think they're going to be willing to do that, no charge. And so I'm really excited about that, very appreciative of them. But Ms. Miller's here again tonight. I appreciate her time coming up and meeting with us to answer any questions y'all have on the agreement, and of course, I'll be here and we'll be able to, if you, if you have any further questions, even after tonight, more than happy to answer those via.
Okay. Mr. Ingram?
Question. Mr. Ingram, you mentioned three fans. How many, how many fans are in all City Hall? Do you know?
Ms. Penn, or Brandon?
A bunch.
One-fifth of the fans need to replace.
Generous offer. Okay, thank you. That's all I had.
Ms. Wilson?
I appreciate the presentation that we had from Schneider a month ago, and I think we've looked at this and have had good experience with it. Therefore, I make a motion that we engage Schneider Electric for on-call energy sustainability services.
I'll second.
A motion, second. Further discussion or questions? Okay, have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. All members voted for the motion.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you. Item F, discussion and possible action to award the Flocculator replacement project to J.S. Heron Company in the amount of $671,000. Mr. Hatabian?
Yes, thank you. As you recall, we brought forth last meeting the bid results and just looking to award the contract to get them started.
Mr. Damon, you know how much, do we have, what did we have in the budget for?
It was budgeted at $720,000.
Okay, so this is under budget. I thought it was a little over $700,000, so. Questions, comments? Ms. Wilson?
Since I made the motion last month a little early, I'm going to go ahead and take the motion this month to award the Flocculator replacement project to J.S. Heron Company in the amount of $671,000.
Have a motion?
Second.
A second? Any further discussion? All in favor of the Flocculator motions? Aye. I had to get it in there one more time. Pose nay. All members voted for the motion.
Thank you.
Got to find our, find where we can, right? So we'll move into new business. Discussion to renew H2O Innovation's water and sewer operations contract. Mr. Hatabian?
Yes, H2O Innovation, also known as Optech and Utility Partners, has been operating our systems probably since the mid-'90s. Their last contract was, I believe it was a four-year agreement, and they are proposing a, a five-year agreement this time around. They are also proposing to keep the, this fiscal year's rate the same as last year's, and also capping, you know, adjustments in the upcoming years based on the CIP with a minimum of 1% and a maximum of 4%. In addition to that, they have included some options or alternatives to add on for us as well, that we can, can, or you don't have to, or we can, you know, include them as well. I believe they are for an additional crew, which would allow the city to do its own water main projects, per se, without having to go to consultants to design and, and get them bid, so they can do that themselves. I think it was for another cost for another utility locator, and they also had costs for additional staffing at the wastewater plant when, when those needs arise. I know it's a five-year agreement, but there is still the termination clause in the contract, a 60-day termination clause, so you're not really locked into that for, for five years.
So I know we're just discussing that tonight, I believe that termination clause is annual, which keeps us from committing future council members, which is, is, is not allowed, so, again, we'll be looking at this at the next meeting, so, our action? Any questions, comments on that? I know, no issue has been a great partner and knows our system inside and out, and...
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I mean, I'll, I'll give you one example, that we had that break, what night was it? Tuesday night? They figured where, they had the break before anyone called it in. They were noticing some pressure issues at the, at the water plant and, and mobilized crews to go looking for it before it was even called in, so, they know the system.
Yeah, they do a great job. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Garland reminded me there's no motion needed for this, but I do want to make a comment. We've been with this, we've outsourced our water and sewer for a long time, and we've been with the same company, I believe, the whole time, and I believe that we've had good, very good service from them, and I can remember when we were having a real hard time keeping certified people in our water and sewer since we, they've taken over. At first, it was Optech, now it's H2O. We don't have to worry with that, and I'm very appreciative for that service, and I'm not making a motion, I'm just happy we have.
Just to clarify, no, I, I agree, they are great partners. Okay, so we'll move on to item B, which is discussion only of Harmon Park Improvement Project. And Ms. Wilson, I, I confuse you on a lot of those, so, it's, it's both of us, so. Ms. Watson?
Hello, thank you. So as you know, for the last year or so, we've been in design for Harmon Park Improvements, and we did put this out to bid in June, and we received four bids, with the low bidder being Triscapes at $4,328,732.07. As a reminder, this does include the mini-pitch field, a new basketball court, 10, 12, 10 to 11-foot wide multi-use concrete trail, sidewalk improvements, new asphalt for the parking area, and then additional parking as well. And then picnic pavilion, there's a whole lot of new items that will be included in this project, and it is, will be funded by SLOST and Impact Beast, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I know it's, it's a large price tag, and when we, you know, when some of us first heard it, we were like, catching our breath, but then, I think when we, Mr. Peppers described it to us and Ms. Watson, that, you know, we were including the trail on that side, and I think the sidewalks are all around Harmon Circle. I mean, it's not just around the park. And again, it's, it's a park that is, I don't think we have not heavily invested in for many, many years, and so I think it's exciting, exciting that we are investing in, in that park and that community, and certainly the soccer pitch field is, is exciting, so, we're doing a lot, and, and I think when you take everything into consideration that we're doing and expanding the trail and, and I think future connectivity to the trail on the other side and, and what we'll be able to do there, it's, it's exciting, so. Questions, comments? Ms. Schmidt?
Thanks. Bethany, the, is there, are we going to be able to do anything? I know there's a chain, that park is right on the river, like, it's incredible. Are we going to be able to do anything with the landscaping where that fence is to make it so we can tell that the river is right there as part of this plan?
So we do not have landscaping in the budget for, or in our scope, but we do have additional funds that are at our discretion, so that is something that we can add in. We are replacing that fence.
Oh, okay.
It's not going to be just the fence, but it's also not going to be landscaping. We were going to put in like a rail similar to what we have down at Edouard River.
Oh, great, okay, perfect, thank you.
Further comments?
I have one question.
Ms. Toll?
Bethany or Billy, either one, for the public's benefit, could you give us an update on, Arthur Blank Foundation had put a deadline on the grant matching, and can you give us a sense of where we are with that and, and their flexibility to extend timing, because it is taking a little bit longer than they had anticipated?
So we did ask for an extension until October, I believe, which, of course, this is not going to be complete by October, but I believe, I don't, I don't want to misspeak, but there's some sort of deal where they can't extend it to April at this time because of some kind of background person that's, sorry.
No, I was going to say, I took it to mean that that was essential at the end of their fiscal year. They could only extend it to October, and they basically said, just ask us and we'll extend it again for November 16th.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, great. Thank you. Sorry for putting you on the spot.
Any other questions? So again, I repeat, I think it's very exciting, and, and we've been talking about the initiatives we're taking in Sunnyside, and I think this will be a huge step forward of, of putting our money where our mouth is, so I'm excited about it. Item C, discussion and possible action on stormwater and sidewalk project for Juniper Street. Mr. Poole? Welcome.
This is for the Juniper Street Stormwater and Sidewalk Improvement Project. Mr. Hooper brought this a couple of months ago, and unfortunately, the, they, the bidder backed out, so we sent it out to bid on May 17th, and R&B developers were the winning bid at $224,404.50. They're the only bidder. So we had, you know, several people come to the meeting, it's the only one that submitted a bid.
Thank you. And can you just give, Mr. Poole, a, a brief overview of what all the project will entail?
So there's roughly 1,350 linear foot of curved 24-inch curving that's going down. We're going to remove the four-foot sidewalk and replace it with 1,350 linear foot of a five-foot sidewalk. There'll be five ADA ramps, some ditch reconstruction, and some manhole reconstruction.
Great. Again, another, another area that has needed addressing for quite some time. And I did want to mention, this is a perfect example of, of where our cost has dramatically increased, or the vendor that, that backed out, I believe it's almost doubled in, in how, how many months? It's...
Four, five months?
Four or five months, and I think the...
We've had it priced multiple times over the years.
Yeah, but I think just in a short period of time, the, the, the cost has, has almost doubled, so it's, it's, you know, inflation and, and what's happening is, proves our point that Mr. Peppers was talking about earlier, so.
And that's one of the reasons why we've asked for possible action tonight, because we're going to go ahead and lock, lock this bidder in and get the work done before we have an opportunity for a bidder to back out.
Yeah.
It's in pretty rough shape down there, so we could really use it.
Right.
It has been for a while.
Right.
And that'll be like all-new driveway aprons for all those residents, so make it look a little bit better.
Yeah, thanks so much. Needed, so. Any other questions, comments, or motions?
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Mayor, I just got to get my thoughts together here.
Thank you, Mr. Toll.
It's a fairly long one. Motion to award the stormwater sidewalk project for Juniper Street to...
The only bidder?
The only bidder. What's the name of the company?
R&B Developer.
R&B Developer, thank you, Mr. Peppers.
So we have a motion? Is there a second?
I second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. All members voted for the motion. Item D, discussion and possible action on municipal court, courtroom renovation. Mr. Poole?
So for the stage renovation, we issued an RFP on April 12th, and we had multiple people come out to the site meeting, and nobody, we weren't issued one bid. So we reached out to a couple of our contractors that, one of them had done the, previously done the renovations at Public Works Department, and they came back with, let's see, it was North Georgia Renovations, came back at $45,762.55, which thought that was under what we were expecting, by, you know, probably $20,000 or $30,000. So... They're prob, what they're, the drawing show is they're going to pretty much cut off three and a half foot of the stage, make it flat, do away with the dais, and then build a more, something similar to state court, like a six-foot judge's bench with like four-foot wings. They'll refinish all the hardwood floors, new carpet, new paint, and then issue, I think there, it hasn't been said on what type, they would inspect out for a new PA system, personal PA system for the judge.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Motion?
Did you want action on this tonight?
If we could.
Mr. Garland?
I'm a lawyer, I'll take care of it.
That's why I look to you, so.
But move that we approve the quote from, is it North Georgia?
Renovation.
Renovations. At $45,762.55 for courtroom renovations.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. All members voted for the motion. Thank you, Mr. Poole. Item E, discussion of 2024 special purpose local option sales tax SLOST intergovernmental agreement, IGA with Cherokee County. Mr. Peppers? Mr. Peppers.
Good evening. I think I have a presentation back there. There we have it, a presentation. Want to give you a little bit of background on the 2024 SPOLOST. It is planned to be as a referendum in front of the voters, part of the general election this November. Little bit of timeline overview. We received notification from the Board of Commissioners on April 4th that they wanted to move forward with a meeting to discuss another round of SPOLOST. On April 20th, there was a meeting held at the County Administration Building between the mayor, city managers, and Board of Commissioners, where we received an initial proposal from the county as it relates to SPOLOST. On June 8th, the cities had another meeting and we did a counterproposal. On June 22nd, we had a third meeting where the county countered our proposal. And then we had a compromise that was reached as part of that meeting. On June 28th, we received a spreadsheet of the funding distribution from the county. We received a draft intergovernmental agreement on the 29th. This month, our goal is to have the cities approve the IGA with our expenditure of funds, our buckets of projects, so to speak. August 2nd, the county will have to adopt that final IGA, call for the referendum, and then the election would be on November 8th. So a little bit of background. The collection of the renewed SPOLOST, if approved by the voters, would start on July 1st of 2024. We would not receive those proceeds until September. There's a little bit of a lag between when they're collected by the retailer, submitted to the state, and then retrofitted, redistributed to the local communities. It is being based off of a 5% annual growth in sales tax. And the total projected tax collection is $423 million for the life of the 2024 SPOLOST. There will be one Level 1 project. Level 1 project gets its cut of the funding off the top. It is restricted by state law as the type of project that it can be. The county plans to do a courthouse expansion, and they have an estimated budget of $74 million. So from the 423 minus the Level 1 project, that leaves about $350 million to be split. And the decision is to split it based upon population. So the negotiation side on population, originally the numbers that came to us from Cherokee County were for the 2020 census. And of course, SPOLOST is a six-year agreement that would go from 2024 to 2030. The concern from the cities was that that first year of SPOLOST was going to be four years removed from the census data that was used for population. So our initial counteroffer was to use a projected population of 2027 as that would be the midpoint of that SPOLOST. And so we would get a little bit more in the first years, but we would be giving up some in the later years. The county wasn't too keen on that. I've provided a little bit of information on the bottom. On the 2020 SPOLOST data, that put us at 32,900 in population for 12.42%. We would receive about $43 million based on the original offer from the county. The counter from the cities had us at 2027 population of 42,400, which would have been 13.6% or $47.7 million. The compromise that we were able to reach with the county was that they would use the 2022 numbers as the basis for SPOLOST, which for us is 35,449, which is 12.728%, which would generate $46.3 million. So just that piece of the negotiation netted us an extra $3 million. Additionally, we got the county to concede using some of their funds that they get on the unincorporated side of the population to pledge towards joint projects. And they have joint projects with each of the cities. But for the joint projects, they had proposed for funding in the city of Canton. They had projected putting $3.4 million into road projects. Of those, they had $1.7 million for Marietta Highway at Univeter and Butterworth intersection, $540,000 for State Road, State Route 140 at North Side Cherokee Boulevard, and $1.1 million for some roadwork on Shoal Creek. We went back and we said, we're okay with the projects that you're looking at for the other cities because ultimately you already have intergovernmental agreements for those projects. You don't have one for the city of Canton, and we don't necessarily agree to those three road projects that you've outlined. So our counter from Canton that was supported by all the other municipalities was for the agreement from the county to be to pledge $3.4 million to projects to benefit the city as joint roadway projects. In speaking with the county manager, we're working on drafting an intergovernmental agreement that spells out what those projects are. But basically, we think we're going to put the full $3.4 million towards that Univeter Butterworth Marietta Highway intersection. We don't know what the cost of that project's going to be, but we both feel confident that their $3.4 million plus some of our money that will come in the future SPOLOST will go into that roadwork project. We don't have to have for the IGA for the call of the referendum with the county and the other cities. We don't have to have a specific IGA with the county for that project at that point. We can do that between now and November. But the IGA will reference $3.4 million, and it will list that particular project at Marietta Highway as a recipient of joint project funds. So again, the final compromise was that Cherokee County would utilize the 22 population for the base distribution instead of the 2020 population. On the joint projects, the cities agreed to the county using funding for joint projects. Also, we got the county to commit that they would use that funding first, not meaning that they will spend those dollars first, but they will set those dollars aside to make sure those projects get completed as opposed to coming to us at the end saying, we don't have any money anymore. So they have to set those aside. We will have an IGA with Cherokee County for our joint projects, but those projects will total $3.4 million. And then again, the county is utilizing a 5% growth rate. Initially, their concept was based on a 4% growth rate. And then the last part of it is that any excess funds that come above the $423 million that are projected will still be distributed based upon population, which is what we have going on right now as a city. So the final results from Canton is that we're going to receive $46.3 million based on our population share. We will receive an additional $3.4 million in joint road projects. We'll receive a total of 12.728% in any SPOLOST overages. And our total share with those three things combined, based on just the revenue estimate of $423 million, is just a little shy $50 million for the city of Canton. I would note that our current SPOLOST was set at $24 million. So that's double, over double what the current SPOLOST was estimated to pay. One benefit that we get, that some of the other cities don't get, is that that $74 million Level 1 project is in the city. So it should increase values because it is a construction project within the city, and it, it will benefit the city as a whole. So, and there's my contact information if you have any questions.
What are your hours?
I think I took my old presentation slide and didn't take that one out. But if you have any questions, you know where to reach me. I did provide to you in your packet, I did provide to you in your packet a copy of the last intergovernmental agreement that we had that outlines the way those projects were funded. The language is basically the same in this intergovernmental agreement. I've given you a draft of that. And then there's a spreadsheet. One other item that the county did agree to is that with the city of Mountain Park, for instance, they have very few residents that are in Cherokee County. Historically, what has happened is the county has paid them a lump sum upfront instead of making distributions on a monthly basis because it doesn't make sense. That amount is generally a flat fee, like $25,000, and it's more than their proportionate share based on population. The county is responsible for anything above that per-population piece coming out of the county's share of proceeds. They're doing the same thing with Nelson. Apparently, there was an issue with Nelson and their population and the census. And so they are funding that overage to Nelson out of the county's share, not out of the city's share. So I did want to mention that. The next step for us is going to be bringing back to you basically the projected buckets, how we think those funds are going to, are going to spill out. We will, as we have done in the past, use more generic language. It gives us a little bit more flexibility. But you're going to see a bucket for parks and recreation. You're going to see something for transportation, infrastructure, road repaving in that manner. There'll be something for economic development. There'll be something for general government buildings. And one thing that we'll be bringing new to this SPOLOST that we haven't done in previous SPOLOST is an area for public safety equipment and capital leases. So we'll be able to fund our police car program through the SPOLOST as opposed to funding it through the general fund. But we will bring you back a breakdown of those funds. I'm hoping to get something emailed out to you by the first of next week so that you can start looking at that. When we have our council meeting later this month, what, what the cities are encouraging their councils to do is to agree to the basic terms of the IGA from the county, get the council to agree to the specific projects for their own city, the specific list of joint projects, and authorize their mayors to sign an agreement that includes those things. Otherwise, we're going to have to wait until City A gets their signed and, and it becomes a domino process, and that becomes a little bit difficult. But we will be able on August 1st meeting in August to provide you with the final document that was approved by all the cities. We don't really care how Woodstock spends their money. They don't care how we spend our money. We're more concerned about the framework and then what our piece of the pie looks like. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Peppers, for your work on this as usual. On a personal note, I want to thank my fellow mayors in Cherokee County. We worked hard on this. I think we learned a lot from the SDS negotiations. We, as Cherokee Municipal Association, we met several times. We stood united through the entire process. We drove a hard bargain. And we support each other, which, which equated to all cities getting a, a, a larger share of, of the bucket, which, which is only fair because most of the retail dollars generated SPOLOST come from the cities. And then even as it got to the end, the other cities who already had the IGAs for the road projects generated, and Canton didn't have one, the other cities said they would not agree to it unless the county agreed to, to fund that amount without an IGA. And so they agreed to do it only if they would give us, guarantee that amount. So it, it was a good experience. And I think the county even, you know, commended us on, on our negotiation skills, and we, we got it done. But it was, it was great teamwork. And I just wanted to thank my fellow mayors for, for, for sticking that, with us in that. So, and, and city managers for working on that. So, any other questions for Mr. Peppers?
I do have one question for Mr. Peppers. You mentioned in your, in great presentation, thank you for that. In your presentation, you mentioned over 12% of the overage would go to the city of Canton. Can you explain how that number was arrived at?
Sure. So using the 2022 population, 12 point, and I don't have the figure right in front of me, 12.278, that is the city's portion of the total population of Cherokee County. So one thing that we noted when we were having conversations with the county is that even though the county has grown over the last decade, two decades, the city's growth has outpaced the county's growth. Not just our city, but all cities have outpaced. So what's really interesting to me is that Canton, from a population standpoint, even though we're not the largest city in the county, our percentage of the growth has increased more from last SPOLOST to this SPOLOST than any other city because our population proportionally has increased more as a percentage than anybody else's. So it could be that when we are negotiating SPOLOST 2030 that we're looking at 15, 16, 17% of those funds being as the city of Canton just based on our growth. Especially if the county's goal is to restrict growth in the unincorporated areas, it's going to push that growth into the cities.
Thank you.
Yes, I think we made up ground this SPOLOST, but I think we also positioned ourselves and the other cities for, to be in a much better negotiation position for 2030. So, so it's a good experience.
I just want to thank you and, and Mr. Peppers for your negotiations. I mean, when you think that we're getting 50, almost $50 million into our tax base that is money spent here in the county, we don't have to, we don't have to assess our property owners. This is, this is money that's coming to us from people who are coming here to shop and to spend money in the county. And SPOLOST is, has really become one of the good things that's happening all over. And so I appreciate the negotiations that you did for our city to be able to get their fair share.
Thank you. Anything else? Mr. Peppers?
A couple of items. I sent out an email last week and, and also added it to our website with some project updates. I'm not going to hit all of these. Just to let you know, we still remain on schedule with a water pollution control plant. There's some parts of it that have taken a little bit longer than we thought, but we still remain on schedule for that. We are working on putting together some pump station improvements at Governor's Walk and Legion Field that'll be coming to you. On the transportation side, if you've been in the Teasley area, you see we're well under construction out there with that traffic signal, which is great. I did have some questions earlier. Now, I think Ms. Watson did as well about the traffic signal at Reservoir and Reinhardt. We're still waiting on G Dot's response to our plans. I did inform a resident or two that asked what they could do. I said, reach out to your state house member. It may be that you need to get your representatives to help grease the wheels with Department of Transportation on that. Parking deck is still on go. We were working on some site work today, and, and so we should be finished with that project in August. Park improvements, we'll begin shortly working on the, the concrete work for the new restrooms out at Heritage Park. We're still in a delay on the playground equipment at Heritage Park. That's one of those quirky things where some parts are in and some parts are not in. And you can't put a playground out for the people to enjoy when the most important parts aren't the ones that are in. So we're still working on that. The Tourism Group approved a contract with Tempest to start up building a new tourism website. That project will start in August. Additionally, they contracted with the Horwath HTL to develop a feasibility study for a hotel conference center on land that we own. We have a new mural that we had a ribbon cutting on here recently downtown. On the housing side, Mr. Patton has been working on an application for the Georgia Initiatives for Community Housing that would put the city in a program that helps us with community planning for housing, partners us with others. Additionally, Mr. Patton and Mr. Tolan and I were at a meeting yesterday with the Canton Housing Authority to talk about a 4% application they're putting in for a competitive project at Oakside, which we are supportive of that as well. The only other item I wanted to mention to you, and this is very, well, two, I take that back. One is very timely. This afternoon, we did receive checks for our second liquor license in the amount of $430,000, which is more than we received on the first one. So we've got our second bidder that has been responsive. They will have 30 days to submit for the pulling of that license. The other thing I wanted to note, and I noted it to you in an email, we did receive a note from the Georgia Department of Community Affairs that they were supporting our application for funds from the Appalachian Regional Commission for a pedestrian bridge and put-in-take-out along the river between the new trail section that's under construction and the mill on Edouard. Angie Busby did the work on that particular application for us, did a fantastic job. We are awaiting the federal approval on that, which could be, you know, a few weeks. I hope they're faster than G Dot on their, on their traffic signals. But as soon as we get more information on that, we'll be able to present it back to you. So we're very excited about that as well. And I'm happy to answer any questions. Mr. Tolan had asked about towing services, RFP, yesterday. We had issued an RFP for towing services. We had no one that attended the mandatory pre-bid meeting. We pulled back the RFP that we had issued, and we've made some tweaks- pre-bid meeting. We pulled back the RFP that we had issued, and we've made some tweaks to it. We've identified all of the towing companies that exist in Cherokee County, and we're going to reissue the RFP and specifically make sure they have it in hand. I don't have the exact timeline on that. I expect it's going to go out here next couple of weeks, the 18th, and we'll come back in August. So, that's a little bit more information for you on that. Any other questions?
Questions for Mr. Peppers? Thank you, Mr. Peppers. Didn't have any council introduce items, just wanted to double-check. My report, I, I just want to take a moment to, to brag a little bit on our team. Be, we can, for last, we were down in Savannah for the Georgia Municipal Association Annual Conference, and we learned a lot and spent a lot of time with our colleagues and peers from other cities, and, you know, it's always great to, to hear what other cities are doing and peers, what our peers are doing, hear their success stories, hear their failures. We, we learn from both. But, you know, it was great to repeatedly hear, time and time again, Canton being held up as a model of excellence. We often introduced ourselves in, in the classes telling what cities we're from, and I mentioned this in, in the article this week, but, you know, I introduced myself as mayor of the city of Canton, and the lady next to me said, Canton, Canton, Canton. That's all we hear about these days. So, anyway, Mr. Peppers led two sessions. I was in one of his classes where he went first, and a few other cities followed him on, on case studies, and I really felt sorry for the people who, who followed him, and they all kind of referred back to, to his session. But I just want to, again, thank our, our council, our, our city managers, and Team Canton for amazing work that they're doing because it makes us, it makes us shine, and I couldn't be prouder of that, and, and I think we all came back with our heads held high, so, which is rightfully so. So, good work to you. So, and that's all I have, and I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn. We're staying. We're staying.
I'm going to take my time now, so we have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor say aye. Posse nay. All members voted the motion, voted for the motion? You are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
That says if we walk out for adjourn.